Good afternoon. This is the Greenfield Public Schools Budget and Finance Subcommittee Meeting, Friday, October 28th, 2022, at 12:30 PM with start time 12:35. We're starting due to my inabilities. This meeting is being held fully remotely in accordance with the Governor of Massachusetts' June 16, 2021 Order extending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law, GLC 30A, Section 20. Per Open Meeting Law, any member of the public may make an audio or video recording of this meeting. So, let's do a roll call. Christine, you've taken notes in the past. Are you doing that today?
I am.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure. All right, so, Member Johnson Mossad.
Here.
Member Martini.
Here.
And Secretary Extrem, although in this case, I think I'm Chair Extrem, I am also present. Who else do we have with us? For, we have the Superintendent, the Assistant Superintendent, and it looks like Andy Pecat. Just so that those things are also on the record, I will open the, open for public comment. Is there anyone who would like to make public comment with us today? Not seeing anyone. I'm gonna go ahead and do a Chair's Report. This is more of, I don't know if anyone was able to watch or had the time to watch the City Council meeting where the Mayor spoke, and by no means, I wouldn't expect you to have normally done that. So, I did want to speak a little bit to some of the things that she had said. She had said that the, we had only recently reached out to her regarding funding the contract. Christine, remind me the name.
Unit A and Unit C.
Yep, not the, not the units, the contract stabilization accounts, excuse me. That we hadn't, we hadn't been trying to reach her and discuss that with her. I want to go on the record. I tried to discuss that with everyone in the Finance Department even prior to Christine being here, multiple times. And at one point, was told directly from the Mayor that the School District would have to find the funding for the contracts themselves, and was told that multiple times. Now plainly, that isn't true, and is not where we are right now, but I want to be clear with that because the Mayor made comment that no one had reached out to her regarding any of it, and that is wildly untrue. And one more thing that I want to remind everyone is that because we are in negotiations with Unit A and Unit C, we're not going to discuss that here at all. They are clearly, it's not on the agenda, but it could be something that comes up, and because we are in the middle of negotiations, that any conversation related to that would be executive session. And so, that's all I have unless Christine, there was something that you wanted me to mention. We had spoken briefly, but that was, those were, I was really taken aback by some of the Mayor's responses of things that, that she was saying that she wasn't aware of, or hadn't been given information for, when I know that everyone else in the School Committee was aware. So, you can imagine my unhappiness with that. Outside of that, Christine, would you like to take it away? Or Andy, whoever's gonna discuss the review of the budget post-realignment?
I would appreciate if Andy could start because I am doing minutes simultaneously.
Sounds good to me. Andy, can you take it away for us?
Yes, can you all hear me? Yes?
Yes, I can.
Okay.
Yep.
Kate's saying yes.
So what you have, so what you have is, you know, we had a proposed budget that was higher than the Mayor's final approved budget. So in addition to as we've done in the past, and we've talked, you know, we do this realignment where, A, backing into the Mayor's number, B, with when this, over the summertime, when our other grants, we start to get the numbers as to what those are. And then, we also do in a sense, as close to real time as possible, alignment of the personnel with all the changes that we've had, and that we continue to have. So, what you have attached is the budget that was worked on with Christine, the Administration, and Karen with, working on what we are going to be doing with the grants and the special revenue funds that we have. So this, this, what this is presenting to all of you is taking all those things into consideration. And what you have on the front is a chart showing the other special revenue funds that we have got the clarification on, and what we are finally using for, for changing things around. And I'd draw your attention to the school choice line because as we've discussed and somewhat related.
Andy, hold on, I'm sorry. Would it help everyone if I shared my screen? Because I'm, I have the document pulled up that he's discussing. Would that be helpful?
If you would like to, go right ahead, Susan.
Okay. Christine, will you let me do that?
I will.
Thank you.
Okay, go right ahead.
Thank you. Okay, everyone can see?
Yeah, we got it.
Okay. Okay, go ahead. Sorry, Andy.
Okay, so what I note, right, so you can see some of the changes, the ups and downs that have occurred. But like I said, I wanted to draw the attention to the committee about, you know, as we've reported last fiscal year with the settlement of the previous contracts, we had to use the balance, a good amount of the balance of the school choice funds that the district had to settle all those retros to the tune of $660,000 some odd thousand. So the best practice is normally, you want to keep like one year of school choice receipts in your pocket. You know, that's what some, you know, it's one of the best practices. Other places say, you know, just like cities and towns can have 5% in their free cash. You know, there's nothing saying that there's no cap on what you can keep in your school choice. So as we've talked back then, and even talked during budget deliberations and reported out this year, you know, we'd like to get the school choice back up to a point where we're comfortable so that we can handle any surprises that may come. And this does that. And also, what it does is, as we've all heard from the ESR discussions about creating the funding cliff, so you can see we're using more ESR funds, and then therefore, the choice balance that we're hoping to kind of keep and sustain will help out to, you know, stave off any potential funding cliff. So I just wanted to bring your attention to that in particular, but I can then open it up if there's any questions on anything that you have, or if Christine or Karen want to add anything.
No, I guess just the, the points to be made is that we're using ESR funds two and three to fund a fairly significant number of staff positions, such as counselors, special education teachers, our nurse leader, Director of Behavioral Services. So at this point, we have the funding available through ESRS two and three, but at some point, I will have to make a recommendation to the committee about absorbing those into the regular, non-grant funded budget, or we'll have to make a recommendation that positions be eliminated. So that's, you know, as we know, that's the element of funding cliff that Andy's referenced, and that has been referenced many times since this money was provided to districts.
Christine, can you explain what you mean when you say cliff?
Because of the amount of money that was provided to school districts following the pandemic, a lot of the funding in different districts is being used for things that are recurring costs, like we are, for example, with some of our staff. And so what that creates is sort of this false sense that the funds will be available and the positions will be available ongoing. And when it goes away, have the visual of the cliff, the land beneath your feet ends, and some of those positions will have to be cut because there is no longer a firm ground underneath them financially. That's the, you know, the reference, but really.
I'm sure we all sort of knew that, but I wanted to make sure it was that out loud.
Yep.
And so.
I have a question.
Of course, go ahead, Glenn, sorry.
Um, so, I'm just trying to understand the relationship between the ESR funds and the school choice. I honestly, I'm not even sure I know. I mean, I obviously understand what school choice is, but these are funds that we have to give to other schools if students leave. Is that what schools, or is these, these funds coming in from students who are paying to come to Greenfield?
These are funds that we receive. We receive those funds for students who choose to school choice into Greenfield.
So, is it that we were expecting to have 484K, and we ended up getting 173K, and that's why the amount is revised?
No. No, what it is is that we, so the school choice, we were expected to get, like, we're still gonna get the, around, as of the last number that was published, around that 484. The, the, the idea of school choice, school choice is the closest thing that school districts have to, like a city or town's free cash, or their stabilization, where it's like a reserve fund, you know, so that we can use it for, you know, as we do, use it to supplement our budget, but it also can be used as a contingency account for any emergency that might come up that, that we don't have the funds to cover elsewhere. So, the, the idea is, since we, for lack of better phrase, raided the school choice funds that we had available to us for the two years of contract settlements that we did last year, we were gonna end up, we're gonna end up using current year school receipts for current year expenditures. And that doesn't, you know, in the world of school finance, you know, it's similar to the circuit breaker where they always, the circuit breaker, you're, you're required to only carry a balance over of the prior year receipt. So, you know, we're using this school choice concept of having one year in arrears in reserve to help us have some fiscal stability, should we have any emergencies that occur during the year that we don't have the funds to cover, we could then use a school choice. So it's, it's like a two-pronged approach of, we're using ESR, we're using ESR as Christine stated, and that's kind of taking the place of the potential of what we would have used school choice for, to then get us back up to the point of having school choice funds to be able to deal with any emergencies that don't, that come up.
I see. So, the, the, when it says revised amount, that's the amount anticipated to be spent from?
That is correct.
It's not, okay, so we would get 484K in, that isn't really listed here anywhere, but the amount we're gonna spend is 173K, which allows us to build up the reserve.
Yes, we are, the, the 480, yes, the 484 is about what we were projected to, so this was, as I was saying, even though you're right, it doesn't say the amount we were to receive in that line there, we were actually using current year receipts or current year expenditures. So, 484 was what we are gonna use, and at the time we are building a budget, 484 is what we are gonna be projected to receive.
Got it, thank you.
So, yeah.
I'm set.
I want to talk a little bit about the spent tuition, if that's okay with everyone?
On this line, on this chart?
Yes. So, there is a, so I don't know, Glenn and Kate, how much you all know about stabilization accounts in general. And the city is, is able to set up the, the special accounts, they're called stabilization accounts, where they can put free money for, for things that they're, know they're gonna need in the future. So contracts, you know, whatever it may be. And they, every time they set those up, they have to be named and used in the manner that that account is set up as. And the city does have a special education account that is not, that they use to pay the IAs. They emptied it out to pay the IAs a couple of years ago, rather than using contracts stabilization, they use the special education stabilization and said, then Mayor Bill Martin said, well, these people work with, with special ed students, so it's appropriate to use that funding, which is not what the account was set up for. It was set up to do, to add extra funding if need be, in the situation that we're looking at now, spent tuition, the original amount is 4,000, 400,000, revised amount is 389,000. If that stabilization account still had any money in it, we, that could be something that we would look at to fund that particular account.
I, I don't think I understand, if you don't mind, that, that sped tuition line, that's the revolving account that we have.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Revolving account where, where it's, it's the similar things where, almost like analogous to choice, it's for the, the students that we take in that take part in our special education programs that we're allowed to charge them a tuition rate to attend our programs. And it gets put in this revolving account that we then use for covering those expenses and other sped-related expenses.
Right. And so if we weren't able to cover that, the, that account with the city was set up to assist the school district with special education expenses that they, that we would not be able to fulfill if that were to happen.
I have a question.
Yep.
That difference in the sped tuition, does that represent a student who is no longer coming here for those services? Or is that simply a change in rates? Or what is that?
It's not even, it's actually neither. It's similar to what we're doing with school choice. Since we're using more of the ESR, as shown above, we're, we're able to use less of those revolving accounts to sped tuition in the school choice. So it's, it's similar to the school choice discussion.
So basically, what we're doing is trying to use money that has an end date and not use money that doesn't have an end date.
That's a very good way of putting it, yes.
Yeah.
And the plan for those extra funds that are then left, if we do that, is to also put it in some free cash account for?
This is, these are.
More seeing purposes in the future, or no?
Yes.
They would be used.
Yeah, go ahead, Andy.
They would be used as we, you know, when we do our next year's budget development. So, say, you know, just for discussion purposes, the, the total special education budget was $2 million. We're gonna fund, we're gonna request 1.5 million of that from the city, and then 200,000 comes from circuit breaker, and then 300,000 could potentially be funded from the sped tuition account. So it will be used for special education related expenses in subsequent years' budgets.
Can you explain the difference in Title I as well?
I, I'll say that, the title grants are always kind of a moving target because they have this two-year carryover provision. So even though it shows we're using less, it doesn't mean that we're getting less. And also, that Title I has more restrictive uses for it. So, this was a portion that we are using just for, as of this point in time, we did this for Title I expenses that we had anticipated to offset. So there's staffing changes. So again, it doesn't mean that we're getting less Title I. It just means that the staff that we're charging Title I might have been less expensive than what we're originally planning.
Can, more specifically, does that mean that's because there's less staff, or that we're?
No.
Compensating less than we thought we might? What does that mean?
No, less, less expensive. So people are shifting out of the Title I program in the teaching, and then people that were moved in, you know, might have been at a master's level instead of a master's plus level.
I see, thank you.
So how is it, Andy and Christine, how are you guys feeling about what we're looking at here?
I feel fine at this stage, fully October, but, you know, but it's, we're stabilizing, I think, in terms of, I shouldn't say stabilizing, the changeover in staff is slowing down. We still have openings, but the changeover is not, it's not as frequent, which allows us to monitor the, you know, the budget process better, which to me is more critical, given that we're gonna be starting the FY24 budget within the next two or three weeks. So it's always best to have a firm handle on staffing when we start. So we've been spending a lot of time doing that, and I think we're, we're just about there. DJ, our database manager is finalizing the staffing report that has to be sent to Desi. So, you know, that, I'm not exactly sure what the due date is, but it's coming up. So, final checks. But outside of that, I think we're, I think we did a nice job building last year's budget in terms of supplies, in terms of using grants that had been, that still had some ending balances that were available to use. I think we've, we've done a nice job of using available funds.
It looks like there are some extra, like unanticipated IDEA-related funds there. So what's the intention for those?
Those go towards special education tuitions?
Meaning when a student goes to another district or another school, yes?
Correct.
Generally specialized programming for students with special.
Right.
Those would have been funds mostly anticipated, though, going out to those tuitions. So, is this just going to essentially make a little bit more room in the school's budget?
That's correct, that's correct. So we, you know, the, we, we projected that we were gonna use $570,000 in the, the FY23 240 grant. We're actually receiving $588,434. And so, we're just using that as we've done, using it all towards offsetting the district special education tuition program, which will then, that 18434 will help, you know, offset, if you will, again, if you want to say, you know, less, that could almost be attributed to us using less sped tuition revolving account because we got more 240.
If in fact, the needs for students with special education out of district tuitions don't increase more than what we thought filled the budget.
Correct.
Is everyone good with this? Glenn, you're, you're clear and, and feel like you're well-informed? If you're responding, you're on mute.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, good. Kate, your question's answered?
Yeah, I'm good, thank you.
Good, okay. Do we want to move on to this, all of this beautifulness? Does anyone? Kate, I guess I'm looking at you mostly, because I've, I've read through this, and I, you know, having done this for a while, like, it's fairly easy for me to follow the flow. But this is your first time really seeing one of these. So if you have questions about it, I want to encourage you to ask them, rather than say, no, I'll, like, you know, because I, I think it's appropriate.
We're asking around this, I would be fine with moving on to the next item.
Okay, that's fine. Glenn, are you okay with that as well?
Yep, I'm good.
Okay, I don't want anyone to feel like they walked away without getting the information they needed.
I'll also say, I've always appreciated Andy's responsiveness whenever I had a question, and you know, can just call, so appreciate that.
That's great. The other thing that we were tasked, the other thing that we were tasked with, or, or the full committee asked us to discuss with the Superintendent is, if you remember, Member Denise, and we was discussing going to the Massey Conference in, I think it's in Hyannis this year. And we were all sort of interested in going, but didn't know what kind of funding that was available. And we were asked to review or identify funds that could be allocated now and going forward for professional development for the School Committee. Christine and I spoke briefly about this, but perhaps you want to share with everyone what you had said to me?
Yeah, just tell me how much, and we'll figure out where it's gonna go.
Okay.
I mean, I think that's basically it. If you folks just let us know how much you want to be available annually, we can make sure that we account for that.
So if it was, if I were to say, because I know that there, there are, the city will reimburse for funds, but they won't pay them out directly, and there's a limit for reimbursing, I think?
I think, Andy, can you clarify that? Because the, the same language that is in the Charter around the Professional Development for School Committee is also the same language about your stipends, and the stipends are accounted for in the School Committee's building of the budget.
Right.
So.
So what it is, is so the, the bylaw says, or the Charter says that the city is to fund school professional development, but it's not, it doesn't mean that it's in the city side of the ledger. It's supposed to be on our side. So if you look, I mean, there are, I'd say, two lines that would potentially be used for a school committee, which would be the, it's on the last page, page number eight. That's got, is it eight, or maybe, I apologize, yeah, professional conferences and training, line 283. There's currently $2,000 budgeted there. As Christine is saying, if there's an amount that when we do the budget development, you know, and there's even nothing saying that we couldn't do a budget transfer now, to, if there's anything more than $2,000 of professional development that the School Committee would like to go to. So, it's meeting the requirement of the bylaw that it's funded, but it's got to be funded through the school side of the ledger, which is, it's common, I guess, is like, you know, when we've been in, like, I brought up, and when this came up, I told Christine, you know, in the city of East Hampton, it's the same thing, where it's in their charter about the professional development and stipends for the School Committee. It's like, you know, you're gonna fund it, but you're, you know, the city's gonna fund it, but it's gonna be funded as a part of the school's operating budget. So the onus is on us to budget for it.
Okay. And I'm taking advantage of your statewide view. Do you see a lot of school committees who have something like this in their budget with a higher number?
I mean, it's a couple of things I'll say. It's indicative on, say, size of committee, and also relative tenure of the committee. If you've got a committee that's got several veterans on the committee, you probably see, it might be. it might be budgeted for, but it might not be used or used to its fullest. If you're, my personal preference would be that I'd love for school committee members to get educated about their roles and responsibilities. Um, not saying that this group isn't, uh, I'm speaking more of what I've seen in some of our other places. You know, so, uh, all kidding aside, you know, it's a thing where, uh, you know, that it flows both uphill and downhill as far as quality of education. And if you've got a well-trained, well-educated, well-informed school committee and the roles and responsibilities, it can only help the district as a whole.
Right. And so not many of our members attend things. However, it seems to me that since we've had more discussion about this, hopefully people will. Um, and we have six slash seven members on the school committee. Does, does anyone have any interest in proposing a number to put, that we could suggest to the school committee and, and, um, as a whole? I mean, I, I have one, but Glenn, you have your hand raised, hon, go ahead, sorry.
It's okay. Um, so is this two thousand an amount that's been kind of just budgeted year to year and not spent, or is this two thousand dollars that we allocated in response to Elizabeth's request recently?
It's been, it's the former, it's been budgeted year to year and, uh, it is rarely, rarely touched.
I wonder if we could start by just trying to encourage people to use the funds that are here and see how far it goes if we have more interest. Beyond the two thousand, we could certainly do a transfer at a later date, but it seems like, well, there's, it's maybe enough to start already. Um, and the, the problem is just encouraging people to access it.
And I would say that that's, you know, uh, something from my point of view, if, you know, I'm comfortable with that because, you know, we, uh, we've got the ability to do transfers all the time and it were flex, it's flexible and your policy is, you know, straightforward and flexible about it. So it's, it's something that, uh, you know, I could, I could back that view of how we proceed at, going ahead.
I'll say, relevant to this committee, if people are interested, I think I did see a, a training come across my desk over in Wendell, where I'm the town coordinator. A training on, on school budgeting, it's like two dollar, two, two full days, and I think it was like a four hundred dollar training or something. It might be more than we need, but, um, if people are interested, oops. Am I still on?
Yes, you are.
I pushed a button on my phone and I, you, you all disappeared for me on a second. Anyway, I can forward that along, um, if I think of it and let people know in case you're interested.
That seems like a reasonable solution to me. Kate, what do you think of that?
Yeah, I think it makes sense to me. Um, the two thousand dollars seems to be about what it would cost a person to actually attend the Mas conference if they so desired. Um, but it doesn't necessarily have to be used for that because I think it's a pretty big ask to have someone travel, um, for three days and be on the other side of the state, especially if you have responsibilities at home, you know, and I think we do need to be more coordinated about our participation as a committee in events. Like, I feel like we should have someone show their face at, um, at some of these things regularly, because I think we, it would be good for the district to have relationships uh, with other people and to have, um, our knowledgeable school committee, of course. So, uh, that's not necessarily a budget discussion directly, but, um, but I do think it's something we should tackle. Say, we do set forth some type of plans that, um, to increase our expertise as a, a body and it ends up that we want to spend a little bit more than two thousand dollars, we can come back to this.
Right? Absolutely, absolutely.
Absolutely, yes.
Okay, so it's.
Here's an idea. I don't know, that, I'm just thinking in a first draft here, so don't think that I'm one hundred percent committed to this, but what if we used a little bit of money to actually engage, like the collaborative or someone from Mas to like meet with each school committee member and talk to them about, you know, what, try to get a sense of what might be useful, help them develop a professional development plan. Because I, I think for some, it may be a little bit pretty wide open and a little bit hard to think about, might help to have a little bit of, um, of somebody there to help you think about, like, what might be good for you to learn? Is it some, you know, or what, 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 even what resources are out there? Is it that you want to need to learn more about Robert's Rules of Order or School Finance, or, you know, something about um, policy, you know, that kind of thing. I think sometimes that's part of why it gets hard to utilize it.
Okay. So so I guess what we're taking away from, from what's here is, is we feel like the amount that's there is an accurate reflection for now. And if not, the district, including the finance department and the superintendent, are open to um, increasing the funds as needed. And if in the future, if we consistently access those funds, it could be increased. So, am I, am I hearing that right? I'm gonna take that as a yes.
Yes, hard to get off mute, but yes.
Okay, all right. So, um, that closes out all of our tasks for today. Is there, uh, Superintendent, is there anything that you wanted to discuss or wouldn't talk about? I suppose we can't really do it and, because it's not on the agenda. Um, but in the future, no, okay, great.
We'll start budget development shortly for FY twenty-four.
Okay. Great job. I know it's not easy doing all of this aligning and, and it's a slow process and it takes detailed attention. You can't really be watching TV and doing this at the same time, so it gets tedious.
No, try not to.
Okay, well, wonderful. With that, I would be open to a, a motion to adjourn.
Someone.
Excellent. Let's do a roll call. Member Martini.
Yes.
Remember Delta Mossad?
Yes.
And Cher Exstrom, I agree, we are adjourned. It is whatever time it is, what does my watch say? It's all right, thank you, everyone. I certainly appreciate your sharing of time and hope, I'm sure we'll do this again.
Thank you all.
Have a good afternoon.